Right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the reorganization meeting of December 9th, 2025. I'd like to announce that the meetings in the Mechanicsburg Area School District Board of Directors are being recorded and livestreamed for the purpose of transparency and increased public access. Livestream along with the recordings from previously held meetings can be found on the school board YouTube channel. At this time, we'll have a roll call of the holdover board members. Mrs. Swiger. [S02] Yes, I will start with Mr. Frangell. Here. [S02] Mrs. Huff.
Here. [S02] Mr. Kickline.
Here. [S02] Ms. Morgan.
Here. [S02] Dr. Levo.
Here. [S02] And Mr. Up.
Here. Item two, presentation acknowledgement of certificates of election for the new and re-elected board members. At the place you all have those at your places. At this time, we'll do the administration of the oath of office. We'll come back here. The four would like to stand.
We'll all put our right hand up. You can repeat after me is, "I."
Aye. [S08] Aye.
Katie, Morgan Straylow.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the Commonwealth.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Welcome to the board.
And I thought if each one of you would just like to quickly introduce yourself to the other board members, for those that may not know, the board to the public, or your families.
I'm Morgan Straylow. I am the mother of a second grader at Shepherdstown Elementary. His name's Seth. And my husband, Sean Straylow, he's a professor at Masai University. And I'm thrilled to be here to represent my region of Upper Allen and Churkensville.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deborah Kearns, representing Region One. I think I have six family members who are actually victims of this district. My granddaughter Adeline is a second grader at Broad Street, which is fantastic and so exciting. I'm a school social worker in Harrisburg. I'm really very grateful to be on the board and to be of service on behalf of us.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Katie Dang. I represent Region Three, which is the borough of Mechanicsburg. I'm the mother of two wildcats, one in third grade at Broad Street and one in the fourth grade at Elmwood. And I am very excited to step into this role to represent the community and the communities of Mechanicsburg.
My name is Rick Bradley. This will be my, starting my 18th year on the school board. I have two graduates of Mechanicsburg, and my wife also is a graduate of Mechanicsburg. So I am happy to continue serving on the board and continue with the new group of folks. See what we can do as we progress through the next challenge, set of challenges.
At this time, we'll move on to roll call of all the board members, the now new board members. Mrs. Swiger. [S02] Yes, Mr. Bradley.
Here. [S02] Mrs. Dang.
Here. [S02] Mr. Frangell.
Here. [S02] Mrs. Huff.
Here. [S02] Mrs. Kearns.
Here. [S02] Mr. Kickline.
Here. [S02] Dr. Levo. Here. [S02] Ms. Morgan.
Here. [S02] And Mrs. Straylow. Here.
We'll move on to item five, nomination and election of officers. Item 5.01, president. Now open the floor for nominations for board president. Do we have any nominations for board president? We have a second. [S01] Second. Riley, do you accept the nomination? All right, do we have any other nominations for board president? Before I close it, last chance, do we have any other nominations for board president?
Wife nominated, you.
My tenure on this board is less than one minute. All right, if the nominations are closed, all those in favor of Mr. Rick Bradley as board president, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. [S08] Aye.
The ayes have it unanimously. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it unanimously. Mr. Bradley, welcome aboard.
All right, good evening. The next order of business is I will now open the floor for nominations for board vice president. Do I hear any nominations for vice president?
I nominate Tracy Morgan for vice president.
Second. [S02] Second, thank you.
Any other nominations for vice president? At this point, Mrs. Swihart.
All those in favor of Ms. Morgan for vice president indicate by saying aye.
Aye. [S08] Aye.
Those opposed indicate by saying no.
Okay. Congratulations.
Ladies, you're welcome to pick any one of the three open seats. There's no need to sit back there. Come on. All right, we'll move on with the agenda. Agenda six, the affirmation of the PSBA standards. Would someone like to read that motion in, please? Six, 6.01.
I'll make a motion to affirm the PSBA principles for governance and leadership.
Any comment?
I'll just share that we are looking to get a new copy for the wall there, but the official copy is also there in your agenda. And it's also present in board policy.
Thank you, Dr. Fitz. Mrs. Swihart?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll report the roll call as unanimous vote.
I'd like to make, I jumped again.
Item seven, meeting schedule. Mrs. Morgan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting schedule for the regular board meetings, work sessions, and finance and facility committee meetings as presented. Second. [S11] Any comment?
Mrs. Swihart?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the roll call as unanimous vote.
And item six, I mean item eight.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. [S01] Second. Meeting adjourned. Listen.
All right. Nice job. Well, you all just saw democracy in action right there. So for those of you that haven't been to a board meeting before, that part we don't always do. That's once a year after, after elections are up. So each year, we reelect a president, vice president, but then every other year, when our community reelects board members, then we have the rest of the reorganization as well. So we're excited to be able to invite or welcome some new board members to the table. So thank you for being able to be a part of that. And now we'll transition into our regular board meeting.
All right, at this point, I'd like to call to order the board meeting for Tuesday, December 9th. First, as a reminder, the meeting of the Mechanicsburg Area School District Board of Directors are being recorded and livestreamed for the purpose of transparency and increased public access. The livestream, along with the recordings from previous held meetings, can be found on the school board's YouTube channel. At this time, I'd ask, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have a moment for silent meditation. Mrs. Swihart, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Bradley.
Here. [S04] Mrs. Dang.
Here. [S05] Mr. Frangell.
Here. [S04] Mrs. Huff.
Here. [S03] Mrs. Kearns.
Here. [S05] Mr. Kickline.
Here. [S04] Dr. Levo.
Here. [S06] Ms. Morgan.
Here. [S05] Mrs. Straylow. Here. [S05] Thank you. And well, endorsement, endorsement of agenda.
Any comments or concerns regarding the agenda for this evening?
There are no changes to the agenda, and it will stand as is.
Excellent, thank you. And then the reading of the minutes for the regular board meeting held on November 11th, 2025, and the special board meeting held on November 25th of 2025. Any comments or concerns on the meeting minutes? If none, then they'll stand as written. Thank you. At this point in the meeting, we have an opportunity for public comment. This is for items that are on the agenda. There will be two opportunities for public comment this evening. As a reminder, public comment is limited to residents and taxpayers of the school district. At this time, we have reached the first opportunity for public comment. This opportunity is reserved for comments related to items that are listed on this evening's agenda for vote. A second opportunity for public comment will occur at the end of the meeting. The second opportunity is for public comment is reserved for comments on issues not listed on the agenda and not being voted upon. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and requires community members to observe a reasonable decorum. If you would like to address the board, please share your name and the municipality in which you reside. and the municipality in which you reside. Seeing none, we will move on to item three, three dot zero one, superintendent's report. Thank you very much, Mr. Bradley. Usually we start with our students, but I'm going to actually start with Mr. Rupp. I think this is a nice opportunity for us to recognize him while everyone is here in attendance. I know as we do some of our presentations, you're certainly free to go after your presentation. But I think the years of service, Mr. Rupp, that you have put into this district, I think deserve as much of an audience as possible to be able to recognize him. So, Mr. Rupp, would you mind standing up towards the podium here so we can take on you a little bit? Mr. Rupp made a comment a little bit earlier this evening about the fact that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rupp, but that this will be the first time in probably about 100 years that a Rupp is not involved in the district in some sort of official capacity.
Almost correct, since actually the late 1800s.
Wow.
All of our kids.
Between board membership and students, being students in the district at various buildings and various levels, I don't think there's a building in the district that doesn't have the Rupp name on the placard in the foyer of the building.
That is true, including Simpson Street School, the former Simpson Street.
And just for you specifically, the years of service that you've given to the district.
I believe Ms. Morgan, Mr. Bradley, and I are all of them.
So we thank you for your service, for your family's service, but specifically, this is a chance to celebrate you and the work that you've done. I will point out just a few specific ways that have stood out to me in the way that you've served this district over these last 18 years. First of all, your leadership through our infrastructural changes, from the feasibility study to all those renovations, to all those buildings that now your name is a part of. Your heart and your leadership and dedication are a part of those buildings as well beyond just the name that's on that placard. Because you were a supporter of each of those projects in a way that really made sure that our community understood the importance of those projects. And you shared data and good questions all along the way to make sure that this board continued to steer our district in the right direction. So thank you for that service regarding our infrastructure. Second thing is through COVID. There's no doubt that that was an unprecedented time, and they don't teach you that in board president school, if there was one. For you to be able to partner with Dr. Lady at that time and the rest of the board and other experts in the field to be able to, again, guide our district well through that time was remarkable. So thank you for that service. The other piece I want to point out that many people don't realize is how much of an advocate for public education in general you have been for not only this district, but for the state of Pennsylvania. You've been an active part of PSBA activities. You've been on the Hill countless times to be able to talk to legislators. You've had those personal conversations with our representatives and senators to be able to to influence change, and it's been a big part of your service here. So thank you for that. Finally, just in general, your thoughtful support, your thoughtful support of the district while asking difficult questions, being able to challenge our thoughts and beliefs at times in respectful ways and professional ways, the way that you've led this board in a professional manner. People all the time talk about how our board meetings are run and how our board interacts with one another and how our district runs from a governance level, and a lot of that reflects your leadership, so thank you for that. I know one other group wants to be able to share some thanks, so Mrs. Huff, on behalf of the Wildcat Foundation, is going to share a few words too.
And in case you wanted to volunteer in any other way, the Wildcat Foundation Board is always looking for volunteers.
They meet in Florida through the winter.
They don't. We can do Zoom meetings, so there is another option. But this is a letter from the Wildcat Foundation Board expressing appreciation for all that you've done. I'm just going to leave. Mr. Rupp, the Wildcat Foundation Board of Directors would like to thank you for your seven years of service on the foundation board, and we salute your 18 years of service with the Mechanicsburg Area School District Board of Directors. Joining the foundation board as school president in 2019, Mr. Rupp, among other things, helped the foundation work its way through a capital campaign to fund and build the rich Lipton Field House at Memorial Park Stadium. The foundation is grateful for the input you have provided and salutes your longstanding dedication and effort to support the Mechanicsburg Area School District as a school board member and eventually as school board president. We thank you for your service and wish you well in your next steps of life. Sincerely, the Wildcat Foundation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to conclude with a couple of comments here. Mr. Rupp, with having over 12 years of service, had his name added to our plaque here, years of service recognition for our school board members. You can see it going all the way back to 1935. This individual, Howard Heineman, had 31 years of service from 1935 to 1966. We have a number of board members, several of whom were deputized on board for a bunch of your tenure. So I'll just read the plaque aloud to everyone. The governance of public education depends on the dedication of elected school directors, volunteers who commit their time and energy to serve our schools and community. Their only compensation comes in the form of pride in knowing that their efforts contribute to the stewardship of our district. Just as a child's journey through our schools spans from kindergarten to 12th grade, we recognize here those school directors who have served for 12 or more years demonstrating unwavering commitment to education and to our community. So John Rupp with 17 years of service from 2008 to 2025, congratulations. Now we'll recognize some newer members of our community here, and we'll go to Northside. So Dr. Rudisil is here with some students and staff members, and they're going to be talking to us a little bit about our new ELA program, which the board supported and implementing this year. It's Dr. Rudisil.
Yes, well, thank you for having us this evening. Again, my name is Dr. Rudisil, and I'll kind of echo what Dr. Fitz said. I really do find it an honor and a privilege to be part of this district and, more importantly, to be part of Northside and to be the principal. I take great pride in that. So tonight, I have brought a few guests, and I'll introduce them here shortly. But we wanted to talk about CKLA, just for some of our board members that were not part of that process, a little bit of the history. So last year, we did some pilots in some schools, and we tried out some different literacy programs to try to enhance our curriculum that we had in place. And we decided on CKLA in April, I believe, that was presented to the board through Mrs. Woodall and Mrs. Bachman and a few others. And so tonight, we're just here to kind of refresh memories of what it consists of and then to get some perspective from our teachers and students about what they like about it and what they're doing with it. All right, so when we talked about CKLA, CKLA consisted of two components. It was called CKLA skills and CKLA knowledge. And kindergarten through first grade, it's an hour block of CKLA skills and an hour block of knowledge. And usually, at least at Northside, we do one in the morning, we do one in the afternoon, not the evening, we're not there that often. One in the afternoon. And it's good to break it up, but really, when you look at the skills component, it does consist of the phonics, the decoding. There's a lot of writing, grammar, word fluency. And I will say, you'll see this word decodable text come up over and over again from our teachers and from our students and how much they love decodable texts. And then when you hit the knowledge piece of knowledge, of CKLA knowledge, this consists of vocabulary, reading and listening comprehension, writing. Writing and reading and listening come up over and over also. And the topics are pretty neat. I will say, first grade, they're learning about the human body. They have become doctors already. We are doing astronomy right now. I know second grade is learning Greek mythology and everything that you could imagine. Third grade, they are anal experts, and now they're students poets. It's unbelievable, and there's more to come. And I will say, you know, they do a great job. Our third grade is a little different. They too get two hours, but it's two consecutive hours of literacy. It is a Julie Huff dream. Three would be better, I know.
Two's good.
Yeah. But same thing, though, it's a lot of information that comes out, but they're doing phonics, they're doing spelling, they're writing every day, they're reading every day. There is, the vocabulary that our students are using is just, it blows me away when I walk into a room and I hear a kid talking about a mammal, and they tell me, well, that's terrestrial. And I'm like, oh, yeah, because we use the word terrestrial every day. But they do, and it's amazing to see it. So tonight, with tonight, we're going to have our grade level teachers and some students talk to you a little bit about CKLA and what it means to them. And then I'll pop in between, because unfortunately, we couldn't have any second grade tonight. There was, I believe, an Elwood concert going on, and we have some students there doing that. And then there were some other family obligations to speak on behalf of the second grade. But that being said, I'm going to introduce our first grade. And with us tonight, we have Mrs. Ms. Claire McDonald, our first grade teacher. We have Charlotte. Yeah, want to get that right? And we have Kamaya Ba, joining us. So I'm going to let them, I'm going to hand this over to them and let them present and give some great pictures of the things that they are doing in the classroom.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Claire McDonald, and I am a first grade teacher at Northside Elementary School. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about our experience implementing the CKLA program this year. In CKLA skills, our students have been introduced to concepts that in previous years we did not teach quite so early, things like long vowel patterns, tricky words, and parts of speech such as nouns. Although the content is more advanced, CKLA gives us intentional scaffolds that make these skills accessible for all learners. As students read the decodable readers individually or with a partner, the skills are clearly underlined and bolded, which helps them apply what they've been learning directly in context. This has allowed every student, no matter their starting point, to approach learning with confidence and support. During partner reading, students are intentionally paired so they can support one another, not only strengthening their decoding skills, but also their listening and collaboration skills. The decodable readers themselves have been a real highlight. They are engaging, full of enjoyable stories and illustrations, and students are genuinely excited to read them. CKLA skills goes beyond the isolated phonics concepts. It consistently builds reading comprehension through its rich discussions and repeated practice. In CKLA knowledge, students have been exposed to a wide variety of stories and topics that truly spark curiosity. So far this year, we've explored fables, the human body, folktales from around the world, and now we're diving into an astronomy unit. With such diverse content, every student has found something that captures their interest, and they are constantly asking thoughtful questions. A major focus in knowledge has been vocabulary development. It has been incredible to hear students confidently using challenging new words in classroom discussions and even outside of the knowledge block. Their listening and speaking skills have grown as well, especially because the program encourages the students to answer questions in full sentences. This practice has carried over into their writing, where we're seeing clearer, more complete sentences and stronger overall communication. Overall, CKLA has provided our first graders with a structured, engaging, and supportive foundation in both reading skills and world knowledge. I'm grateful for the opportunity to teach with this program, and I appreciate the board's commitment to supporting our students' literacy development. Now, girls, I have some questions for you, because we're going to share a little bit. So we've done a lot in knowledge. We've talked about the human body, we've explored fables and folktales, and now we're learning about astronomy. Is there anything you'd like to share with the board, some of the favorite things that we've been able to do in CKLA? Kamaya, can you start us off?
Sure. I like how you got us through it, and I really like what you know we're in now, because I really like space. I know about some constellations, like two constellations, actually, three technically, two.
Should I add a little bit?
I like about like all the new big planets we're in. They're also like more, and I like learning about outer space.
So a big, big part of first grade that we really found was super enjoyable for the kids was learning about the human body. And because of that, we were able to kind of have like a doctor day where the kids got to practice using those skills. Is there anything you guys would like to share about our doctor day in first grade?
It was really fun. We got to take care of animals, and it was really fun. We got to play card games, and we got to kind of like put the human body in the water.
What did you like about learning about the human body?
I like about making, um, building the body parts on there because they're also cool, and I like doing the skeletons because they were so fun to do, and I like the human body.
And then in skills, we talk a lot about our decodable readers. We are so far through two. We've read Snapshots, and we've read Gray. Are there any stories, girls, that you really enjoy from those two decodable readers?
Well, I think I liked Grandma most because it had some funny things in it.
It did have some funny things. We had some funny characters, right, in those stories? You and Gray, Charlotte, anything else you'd like to add?
King, the snake one.
Yeah, King the Snake, that was a little bit of a surprise, right? Yeah, so it's really awesome how not only are these just isolated texts, they kind of build on each other. So by the end of our unit, the kids have read a long story. It's almost like giving them a novel, but just breaking up it into that small chunk. So each story kind of builds one onto the other. So they get consistency with those characters, and that really helps with our comprehension. Anything else you want to add, girls?
I'm.
Second grade pictures again, you see our students in action, always with text, always with writing. Even Mrs. Shealy up in the corner there got into the whole Greek mythology. She had a togo on, it said something about reminding her of her college days, I was. But just to see the interaction. So I asked our second grade teachers, couldn't be here, if they could just leave you some comments and quotes. So they put up there, obviously, our students enjoy the decodable level readers. Again, it's there, they love the frequent written comprehension checks that encourage students to use text support. Our students are building robust vocabulary and background knowledge, and they work books, give them activities where they are reading, writing, and speaking to each other on a daily basis. Our second grade teachers can't speak highly enough of it, it actually met today. We have monthly meetings where we talk about CKLA and what we can do. Now our third grade is here, and so with third grade, I know we're going to do something a little different. Our two third grade students here, Evelyn Huffman and Audrey Brennan, have brought some writing pieces that they've worked on to share with you. They're very excited, and our third grade teacher extraordinaire, Mrs. McTanny, is going to also speak.
Thank you. So have you asked them this, but don't read your things yet. First of all, thank you, all of you, for everything that you do to support us. It's, if you ever, ever, ever want to see like all of it put into action, feel free to come into my room and just watch the kids. Like it is, there is so much that you do for us, but like the truth of it is, is when you come in and you can see it happening, even just seeing the first graders talking, it's exciting. And that's what I'm here to talk about with CKLA. So whenever teachers get this idea of like having a new resource or a new curriculum, it can be a little bit stressful, we'll all be honest, right? Like it was a lot. We had a ton of training, so thank you very much. And what we're seeing as the year is going on is it's awesome. I will say that. So the first thing I'm going to say about it is, is that as third graders, they move from learning to read to reading to learn. So they have a lot of those basic skills that Ms. McDonald talked about already in first grade. Those are, those are, a lot of that is solidified. And now I've got the opportunity to take them further. And CKLA, right off the bat, first three units, we did a fictional unit, The Wind in the Willows. Amazing. Second unit turns to nonfiction, animals. Oh, my goodness, how can you not love animals when you're in third grade, right? Animals, amazing. And then this third unit is poetry, and actually, really fun. We weren't sure what, you know, where it was going to go with that, but we were like, this is great. So three very different genres to introduce third graders to, which has been wonderful to keep their attention, because not all. to keep their attention, because not all kids like the same thing. We all know that. So right away, that's fantastic. Next piece, and Dr. Rudisil and Ms. McDonald already spoke to it, and I cannot stress this enough, is the vocabulary. So CKLA does an excellent job of not only putting the vocabulary in the reading, but introducing the students and really just activating that background knowledge. So when they go to read it, they're like, oh, this makes sense. And I think as adults, we know a lot of vocabulary that students don't. And I think sometimes we forget, like, it might seem like a simple word, but if they've never been introduced to it, they're not going to know it. CKLA is introducing them to so, so many phenomenal words. So that is a huge, huge, huge bonus for me as a teacher. The next piece is all of the literacy pieces that are involved. So when I look at this slide that Dr. Rudisil put together, the students have an opportunity to read with a partner every day. They have, they have an opportunity to read to a partner every day. They have an opportunity to read to themselves every day. Right there, reading, 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 reading. How do we become better readers? We read. Same with writing. They are not just doing these end pieces that are these formal pieces. They are writing every day along the way. They're writing sentences, they're writing paragraphs, they're writing, 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 and we become better writers by writing. So, and then of course, the piece that all children love is they love to talk, 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 talk. So that piece of sharing what they're learning and talking about the stories and talking about everything that's going on makes it, so it's super, super fun too and engaging. It's all about engagement. Like we can be up there and we can think we've got this best laid out lesson plan, but it's really, really, really important that they get to talk. And that's what they're going to get to do. So the writing was a little bit different. So these are two pieces from our animal unit that they're going to share with you. The first one, Evelyn Huffman, is going to share an animal riddle with you. So I want you to listen very carefully, because she's going to give you some clues. And then you're going to see if you can guess what her animal is. And there is some pretty phenomenal vocabulary in here. So go ahead, Evelyn.
What am I? I'm a large reptile. I can be as long as 10 feet long. To stay cool, I hide underground. I kill with my venomous bite. I lay my eggs in a nest. My babies hatch from an egg. I'm a terrestrial. I'm a carnivore. I live in southeastern Indonesia. My body is thick, hard, gray, brown, and green. When I move, I walk and run and swim. Hatching, live in trees to stay safe. I can live up to 50 years. What am I?
You are welcome to call out anybody that has their hands raised. Evelyn?
Is it a kimono dragon?
Yes.
So right away, you can see the vocabulary that's there. This was super fun for the kids. They all got to pick their own animal and then apply everything, all of this great vocabulary that they had learned. So then, the second piece we have, Audrey Brennan, you're going to do great, Audrey. This was a different writing piece. So they got to pick an animal, but they didn't get to just research it and share facts with you. That would be too simple. They had to prove to you why it belonged to one of the five vertebrate groups. So listen very carefully, because she's going to give you her reasoning as to why it belongs in a specific group, and then her explanation for that reasoning. Reason and explain. Go ahead, Audrey.
About salamanders. Salamanders, my favorite animal, are classified by scientists as amphibians. First, salamanders are classified as amphibians, so they're cold-blooded, so it doesn't have a constant temperature. Second, salamanders are classified as amphibians, so it lays eggs. They lay their eggs in water. Additionally, it has gills and lungs, which all amphibians have. The reason is that they live on land and water. They have dots on their body. That is what I learned about salamanders and why they are classified as amphibians.
So as a teacher, again, I cannot stress enough how exciting this is. It's exciting for the kids, it's exciting for the teachers, it's really exciting to talk amongst buildings, just within our team, to Dr. Rudisil, we have these meetings, even amongst grade levels. Like, what is second grade loving? What is first grade loving? And there's a lot of commonalities that are coming up. So I think we picked a good one, is what I want to say. I think it's going to help all of the students at Mechanics become better readers and writers. I think you're going to see it right through middle school and through high school. And that's it. I think that's it. So thank you so much. Thank you.
So I'll say again, thank you to the school board, thank you to Mrs. Woodall and Mrs. Baugh for their time and their energy they put into this, this was well thought out. And I will say, it's amazing to go into the rooms every day and just see our students and how engaged they are. And so, so on behalf of myself, our students, our teachers, we just want to say thank you. We wish you guys a happy, joyous holiday season.
When our students come to present, they have a thank you too. You're certainly free to go. Thank you again.
When are you doing the recognition of the athletes?
Right now.
Oh, that I'm going to say. I was going to say, no, I'm going to stop. Thank you. Why don't I take it?
As they're exiting, yes, we will move from our younger students to our older students. We have some teams that we've gotten used to seeing here in the fall, but we'll introduce that through Ms. McTannen. You know, like for you sports fans, you ever hear the saying, when a legendary coach retires, you don't want to follow that coach, you want to be the coach that follows the second coach? That's kind of how I feel after elementary. Not quite as dynamic or as entertaining as they might promise you, so maybe next time, let's approve like an HVAC system and I'll follow that.
We'll work on that.
Thanks for having us. To the new board members, congratulations. This is something we've started maybe four or five years ago, and we appreciate it. We love getting in front of you, and I also think it's good for everybody to see this side of it as well, see what you guys do and all the time and effort you put in. Before we bring the individuals and coaches up, just to call out to all of our student athletes and coaches from the fall, this is the second straight year that every program was made at the district, whether it was individuals or teams. So every program was represented at the district level, which is not the norm. So it's started to become the norm around here, but I say it as, I want to get used to it, but necessarily don't get used to it. In addition to the teams here, we had a couple of teams that won their respective divisions that didn't make the state tournament. That was football and boys soccer, so a special shout out to them. Now moving to the coaches and athletes here. We're going to bring up cross country first, so if Brian and the three individuals can come up. So just a quick little tidbit, when I got here, I asked the three of them, Lindsay, Nathan, and Emily, what place did you finish at midpens? And not one of them could tell me what it was. So I think that's pretty unique to have a humility like that. When I was playing, I could tell you every step probably since I was a teenager, so credit to you guys for not really looking at that. But these three qualified for the PIAA race in Hershey by advancing through midpens and districts. The teams, both girls and boys, did qualify for districts as well, but these three raced at the individual level. It is, I always say this, I don't know if I said it here before, but the state race in Hershey is probably one of the best spectacles of athleticism. When you see the hundreds of runners coming out at the start, it is a special, special place and time to be. So kudos to you three. I'm going to let Coach Hager introduce them and let them say anything if they'd like.
Thank you for having us. I'm Brian Hager. I'm the cross country coach, and I teach at the high school as well. So we had, like Seth said, three individuals here who qualified for the state meet. Nathan Landers is a junior boy, and then Emily Switzer is a ninth grade girl, and Lindsay McCorkle is a 12th grader as well. And it is impressive what Seth says when we're talking about midpens and our qualification. We go from midpens onto the district, onto the states, and the three young people here. Not that we don't, not that we forget about the midpen, but when the goal is getting all the way to that highest level, we start to focus a little bit differently. What they did is difficult, and not only in their sport, but they are three high-achieving academic students as well. And I know that they are just representatives of the team that's around. We have about 50 young men and women who are on that cross country team who are behind them and pushing them to be better, and these three pulling them along to be better as well. So we're very, very proud of them and what looks to move on to the future with hopefully a few more years. Emily and Lindsay looking at colleges here, and Nathan being a junior, starting that process that we've really developed a wonderful tradition of, it's not just four years here, it's sending them on, and we had the opportunity this year to welcome back two coaches who are alumni at Mechanicsburg and recently graduated from college that I just want to come back, I just want to be involved in helping the next generation move on through. So we are very pleased with their seasons and their progress, and thank you all for the support, for having us here this evening. So you guys want to share anything?
Yeah, I would just say that despite the individual nature of the qualification here, it wasn't, it wasn't just, it's like, it's definitely the team sport, the team environment, and that's definitely what pushed me to get, to achieve more.
Congratulations, guys. You guys get a little grab bag here, too? We still have all the same stickers. We're going to recognize another group, but while Emily's here, she actually qualified for states and then played in a district soccer game that same day. I think since I've been here, she might be the first athlete to be participating in the same season in multiple sports. Don't put me on that. And she's doing it at a high level. So the next group we're going to have is girls soccer. So girls soccer, they went 12-2-2 this year. They, we've talked about this here over the last couple of years with our growth, we have moved up in what we'll call midpen one or midpen Commonwealth. We used to be midpen two Keystone, and they competed at that level with the best of them. They beat teams like Central Dolphin, State College, Century York Schools, that when you think of the largest population of students, we are now competing with them, and we are competing at a high level. They advanced to the PIAA tournament by winning their first three district games and earning a spot in the district championship at Central Dolphin. They did succumb to Manhunt Township that day, but they did finish second in the district, and then took Downingtown West, the defending state champions, to penalty kicks in states where we did lose that one. But it was a remarkable season, and I'll let Coach O'Brien introduce Rebecca and Emily.
Thank you. Yeah, and just a quick note too, before I introduce them, you know, great season, but we talk about this a lot, we talk about establishing leaders and that stuff. Rebecca here is, won't be a 10 seniors this year, and it was just, I coached, but it was kind of like probably the first time in my life, 30 years of coaching, where I stepped back a little bit and let them do stuff, but I could because of, like, just from leadership and just from, and it's contagious. We're going to have like a senior freshman. Rebecca's going to Messiah next year to play soccer. It'll be a great fit for her, just a great, great kid, and Rebecca Witter.
Can I ask something else I'd like to say?
Anyway, first off, I commend her because she's incredible, only freshman on varsity for this year, and also competing in states for cross country, so she can do it all. Super proud of our team. Like I said, I'm Rebecca Witter, captain for girls soccer this year. Super proud of how we competed and played, definitely making it to the district semifinals, and then district finals was one of our goals, and we got there, and super proud of how each person put in the work, regardless if they played varsity or JV. Yeah, that was definitely one of my highlights, and then making it into states. I think a lot of people were kind of just like, okay, like we had a really good season, like whatever happens, we'll be fine. And then we went to that game just being okay with whatever happened, and we ended up going to PK kicks, and we were like, wow, this is great. We didn't think we were going to get this far. But yeah, great year to end on, and super thankful for the opportunity to play a sport that I love.
Remind me who had the game winner in the district semis in overtime? Rebecca. Congratulations. All right, the last group is field hockey. So for those that come to our beautiful gymnasium, you'll notice that in the middle of our wall is our only state championship. It is a sign that we have there, it is certainly a, something we're proud of, but you may not realize that we've never won a division championship, so there's no banner in the gymnasium. That group that won the state championship actually didn't win the division. This group's going to, they get to hang a banner. We are going to put a banner up there for the first time for winning the Commonwealth. This group went 14-3-1, where they also advanced to the district final, lost in double overtime coach in a heartbreaker.
Correct.
But to get to that point, they beat Lower Dolphin, and for any of those that are field hockey people, know that they are sort of the benchmark in District Three, and we were able to go to their place and beat them 2-0 to advance to the district final. Won their first round matchup coincidentally against Downingtown West in states to advance to the final eight, where they did lose in the final eight, but it was a remarkable season. I will let Coach Brown introduce Maddie Cal.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for all that you do for our program and allowing Seth to run an excellent athletic department. We really appreciate him and what he does for us. I have behind me two of the nine seniors that were on the team. They are two of the four captains. Callie Hartman is going to go to Elizabeth Town to play field hockey and lacrosse, and Maddie has aspirations of being in politics, and she's going to go to East Carolina University. So I'm going to let them speak on behalf of the team.
Hi, Frances. My name's Kat Hartman. I was one of the four captains, along with Maddie, and then Avery Rutter, and also Olivia Swihart. And so field hockey has always just been something for, that I've always looked forward to. Always exciting going into preseason, you know, the start of the school year, always a great way to start off the school year. And I'm also just so grateful to have been a part of this team for the past four years, and also middle school and the recreation department as well. This program really has built, I've felt so strong over these years, and I'm really grateful to have been a part of that. Also, our field hockey team just has such a great chemistry and team bonding, and that's really how we were able to accomplish all these things that we were able to do this year. Definitely couldn't have done it without my teammates and just, especially the seniors. We were all very close this year. Definitely going to be hard not playing with them next year, but very excited for the future and things, and I think that this program has really just built me to be excited to play with other people, but also not play with them is going to be hard. Thank you for having us and for this recognition.
Hi, I'm Maddie Donovan, and I'm a senior and a captain, like Coach Brown and Callie said. Thank you all for having us here tonight and recognizing us. Field hockey has meant a lot to me, and being part of this team for the past four years has been an incredible experience. As Callie talked about, it's really rare to find a group that genuinely likes being with each other and have fun together, just genuinely loves each other, and that was our team. Our senior class especially made this year an unforgettable season. We were together on and off the field constantly, and I think that our bond, our bonding off the field really helped us on the field, and it led to a lot of our success. And I will forever be grateful for the kids for field hockey and all that it has done to help me and better me as a person. Thank you.
We appreciate you guys having us. Hopefully, we're back here in the winter. Good evening.
Thank you.
All right. One more item under my report. This one is to share with the board for a first viewing of our 2026-2027 instructional calendar. So for a long time, I used to bring this forward for review and then approval in So for a long time, we used to bring this forward for review and then approval in a pretty late timeframe, oftentimes February, March timeframe. We're trying to move that up earlier and earlier into the year. So that's why typically this would be shared with you at a work session and then we would look to approve it at the next voting period. But because we don't have a December work session and I'd still like to be able to get this voted on in January, that's why I'm presenting it here tonight in the superintendent's report. So our goal for future years is to continue to kind of move the timeline up to be able to have this approved for everyone to know before the turn of the calendar year. But this time we'll do it December, January. So I'll just point out a few highlights of the calendar and I'll remind and share with the board that much of what has changed about the calendar this current school year and what's reflected on the 26-27 calendar is a result of conversations by a calendar committee that met last year. It included staff members, teachers, support staff. It included some parent representation. It included board member representation to be a part of the conversation that they then also got feedback from their representative stakeholder groups to be able to talk about how can we continue to evolve our details right now, although you're welcome to ask questions about it. Some things changed in state law just a couple of years ago, allowing districts to no longer have to have 180 days and a required number of hours. They changed one little word and now you can have 180 days or a certain number of hours. We have always been well above the number of hours required by the state. So we have switched our calendar again based on recommendation of that committee to an hours approach as opposed to days. So this calendar for next year that we're presenting has somewhere between 172 and 173 instructional days represented. It's actually 174 days on the calendar, but some of those are half days. So that's why it's a little less in some cases. So again, I'll just point out a few highlights and then you're welcome to ask any other questions that you have. Once again, we're looking to have an earlier start than what we had for a number of years. So we'll have the first staff day there on August 11th and we'll have four staff only days before students coming back that next Tuesday for a four day week with some staggered start happening there in that first student week. One of the things that we felt was important and again drawing back on the committee was to move up the start in order to get the finish of the year as close to Memorial Day for students as possible. And in fact, because of the arrangement of Memorial Day next year being as late as it possibly can be on May 31st, students will actually finish next year or 2027, the Friday before Memorial Day. So I think that's a first for our district for students for that to happen. But with that, obviously students starting a little bit earlier in August, but still able to make sure that our induction days don't go into July. You can see the first day for new teachers is August 3rd. We have our traditional Labor Day weekends. We have some days here in October. Another aspect of the calendar that the committee talked about was prioritizing having some staff only days periodically throughout the school year. Things have changed quite a bit in education over the years and one of those is the availability of substitutes. So whereas 10, 15 years ago, we had the chance to perhaps bring in a large number of subs to be able to pull teachers out for collaborative planning and professional development, that really doesn't happen anymore. We weren't enough subs to be able to do that with any great frequency. So instead, having these embedded staff only days periodically throughout the calendar give us that opportunity to be able to have planning and professional development while students are at home. In October there this year, because of when conferences were scheduled for, you might remember, we did not have off on Indigenous Peoples' Day, Columbus Day in October because we didn't want to have three weeks in a row that had shortened weeks. The elementary level decided to push conferences a week later, looking at that Halloween weekend as the conference weekend. So that afforded us the chance to bring back into play that long weekend there around October 9th and 12th, which is, the 12th is the Indigenous Peoples' Day, Columbus Day. November, we've got our Thanksgiving break. December is actually the same number of days as this year with Christmas and New Year's being on Fridays. A couple of days there in January and February, some similar rhythm as we've traditionally had with conferences being in the middle of trimesters and marking periods. March, the traditional spring break, which is often held, well typically held around Easter is at the end of March. So because of that, we also have a day there in April. April 23rd is off for everyone and then April 26th is a staff only day. So that'll break up that stretch there because otherwise April and May would be quite a long stretch going to Memorial Day. And then we'll come back after Memorial Day for a couple of staff days for our teachers to close things out for the school year and do a little bit of final planning to wrap up things. So happy to take any questions.
Dr. Bits, can you explain to me, I don't, why the committee decided to go to the hours instead of days? What was the reasoning for that?
Well, again, going back to the number of hours that we've always accumulated has been well above the 990. And when you look at days, there's a number of challenges that exist with that if you're going for 180 days. If you were to embed any of these kinds of staff only days, you would have to do it as an active day, which requires additional submissions to the state, requires additional permissions for us to do that. And ultimately, all you're doing is getting permission to say that you're allowed to go by hours instead of days. So really the concept of going by days is pretty archaic with the opportunity to go by hours if you intend to have staff days embedded within the calendar.
But it sounds like we're, they're going to school six days less, right?
But more hours than we did.
But less hours than we used to go?
Probably a few less.
Not many.
Not many.
And my second question is, we didn't, did we build in any Easter days?
Yes, so it's the same structure as this year where there's three days, the first three days, there would be no school traditional snow days, no makeup days, no remote days. And then the fourth day would be a makeup day on April 23rd. And then anything after that would turn to remote days. Again, that was a recommendation of the committee was to kind of go in that priority order.
I thought you had spoken before earlier that remote days were not really effective, so we weren't going to do those anymore.
But at some point, if we get to five days, we gotta, we have to have those days at some point. So certainly a remote day is more effective than adding it on to the end of the year.
But will the kids be able to give assigned work to do if, you know?
Yeah, we would do the same approach.
If in three days of snow, you know, not in school or something?
The same approach that we've been doing the last several years with that. We've really only had one remote day that we've actually needed to use. And that would be at the elementary level, there are packets that students use. We moved away from the synchronous instruction because there were just too many challenges with the post-COVID students who didn't do that during the hybrid schooling for them to get on devices. So we do hard copy packets for elementary, middle school and high school still use devices to have a mix of synchronous and asynchronous instruction.
Thank you.
And how many snow days do we typically have during the year when you say?
Oh, it varies greatly. Yeah.
It's not an average.
I'm sure there is an average, but I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Well, I do appreciate the Columbus Day. There's some parents that were concerned about that and said, that looks great. And of course, having off that trip again helps parents with the sugar.
The Columbus Day was an interesting one. Very, I really only got one person that shared an official concern, I would say, and it was very mixed. Aside from that, there were some folks that asked legitimate questions about why we didn't do it. There were some others that were quite happy to have a day off and have their kids still here at school. So.
Yeah, I had.
And there's actually quite, I'm not sure what the percentage is, but there's quite a few people that don't have off on that day. So it really didn't make a difference to them one way or the other.
My niece was in my ear, like, why don't we have this day off? No. So she'll be happy next year.
I would just like to applaud the approach to the days off because I agree with remote days being the last straw. So I appreciate the way that change has been made. And the one question is, how do you work with the IU, all the other schools and Forte and those places? If you're going, are you going earlier than them or in calendar development or are they?
So in calendar development, yeah, we'll probably end up being one of the, one of the earlier schools. But honestly, the, the level of alignment between the schools has diminished over the years in terms of checking where everybody has this day and that day. In general, we have now moved to a start time and a rhythm of the school year more consistent with what the rest of the IU is doing, or at least Cumberland County and the CTC, which is probably an even bigger one than the IU. So yeah, most, most districts this past year started the earlier date as we.
And the IU talks a lot about having to balance with all the different members of the IU to try and ensure that when school is in, the services are provided. So they were, instead of working, we're working with one calendar, they're working with multiple calendars to try and ensure that their programs cover whatever days any of their member schools are in. So they will adjust according to whatever the calendar is for the services that are needed in whatever district it is.
Just a question, is this calendar, the first year you have the built in staff only days?
No. This year, so 25-26 is the first one that has it with the earlier start, but we have been doing some built in staff only days since coming back from hybrid.
Okay. I do think it's the first year that I can ever remember we're done in May and not gone to June.
Yeah.
That's unusual.
Stars aligned.
I mean, four Memorial.
Four Memorial Day.
Wow.
Very good. We'll bring that back in January. All right. Thank you very much. That's the end of it. Thank you, Bits. We'll now move over to item 3.02, which is the Cumberland Perry Area Career Technical Center report. I did not get a report from Mr. Sankar. I'll reach out to him to get any additional information. I believe there was a meeting last night and I'll get whatever information I get, I will send out to the board in an email, just to let you know any things that we're working on. With that in mind, also with Mr. Sankar coming off of the Mechanicsburg School Board and thank you for his years of service and his work with the Cumberland Perry Area Career and Technical Center, we are going to be looking for a replacement for him on that board to represent Mechanicsburg and represent our interests in the career and technical center. That, among other appointments, will be something that we'll consider over the next month. And in January timeframe, we'll look at doing reassignments for any opportunities. So if you're thinking of an interest in the career and technical center, the other one would be the Capital Area Intermediate Unit would likely need another representative for that. We can talk about that in the January timeframe. With that, we'll move on to the Capital Area Intermediate Unit report and I have that report. When we met in November, one of the first things we had was a presentation from the Loyesville Youth Development Center principal and took us through the programs that they provide, the students that they support, the work that they try to do. And they continue to look at opportunities to develop career techno, career skills for these students as well as the high school graduation work. One of the challenges that they do have is they have such a wide age group in that center. A little history on that. It's required that if you have a youth development center in your district, that you have to provide support from an education standpoint. And several years back, West Perry could not handle all the demands for that center. So the intermediate unit as an exception took on responsibility for it and has been staffing it, has been working for it. So though it is not necessarily part of a traditional intermediate unit responsibility, they took on that responsibility to assist and meet the demands that they needed for that. So she spent a lot of time talking about the programs and everything. One of the things she did say that it's going to be a little bit of a struggle for them is 40% of their staff will retire within the next five years. So as other areas are talking about retirement and everything, one of their challenges is going to be to meet the staffing needs in the years to come. After the Loyesville Youth Development Center, we talked about the budget and the, at that time, the state budget had just been signed within a week or so of the meeting. The funds were starting to get released. They were happy that the funds were coming in and the, they were coming in a little faster than what they had thought they were going to come in, which was helpful because if you recall on a previous report, the intermediate unit had to do loans to continue to operate. They had to do what was called RANs, Revenue Anticipation Notes. Is that correct? Got that right again? Okay, good. So they had to borrow money. So as they were getting the funds back in from the state and from the federal, it was helping so that they could take care of that money. And of course, any of that money and the interest and the loan origination fees and everything that they had to do, that was all lost revenue, lost money to them, lost money to any school districts that had to go out and get those RANs. And then, of course, they had a little bit of a concern of we're now getting, starting to get into already next year's budget cycle where February timeframe, the governor starts to float the 2026 and the concerns are, are we going to find ourselves in the same cycle, same pattern, same issues that we had before? Maybe, maybe not. It is an election year, so maybe they won't hold out as long this time around. The last one was they're talking about, we get some of our internet capabilities from the intermediate unit. And next year in the March timeframe, they are updating the WAN, the Wide Area Network and a lot of the connectivities into it. So anybody that is connected to the intermediate unit for internet services is going to experience some changes coming up. They're going to, of course, upgrade. And when you upgrade, it's faster machines, some heavier processing, some quicker processing, but it will be a little bit of an effort to transition from what is there today to where they're going to be with the new WAN that they're looking forward to getting into. And that's it. We'll be, they'll be meeting again on the 18th and I will attend the meeting this time around for December 18th. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Mrs. Huff, Wildcat Foundation report?
Registration was open for the Wildcat Foundation night, which is our biggest fundraiser of the year. Board members should have received invitations through the weekly update and we'd love to have your support being at that event. The annual appeal has also started. That was, you should have gotten something in the mail over the Thanksgiving holiday. So again, appreciate your support and any other kind of help there. And then lastly, I think I mentioned this before, but just as a reminder, Faulkner Subaru is partnering with Mechanicsburg Wildcat Foundation with something called the Share the Love event. And for every car sale the dealership makes from November 20th through mid-January, a portion will come to Wildcat Foundation. So if you need a Subaru, feel free to go to Faulkner and buy one and send some one this way.
Excellent. Great. Thank you very much. At this point, there is no PSBA legislative report. I'll be reaching out and working with Mr. Rupp to try to make, continue to start making those connections with the different legislative folks and start opening those lines of communication with them. Nothing from the Finance and Facilities Committee report at this point. For the new board members, when we do, the weeks that we do working sessions, we also oftentimes look at the Finance and Facilities Committee work. We look at budget. We look at what facilities upgrades we need, what infrastructure we need. facilities upgrades we need, what infrastructure we need from, from the Service Department, from the Maintenance Department. It can cover anything from lawn mowers to electrical work, to roofing work, to construction, to a variety of different things. So oftentimes on those working session weeks, we will have them come in and they'll present something to us about money or work that needs to be done. And then we look, oftentimes, there are different categories which you'll learn more about in your training, different categories for where that money is in the budget or where it is in the capital, in the reserves, in the fund balance that we have to pay for those different things. So more to come with that as we move along. And then from a board president report, as I mentioned, we'll be working in January to look at different committees, different assignments. This evening, it'll be a little disjointed when we get to making certain motions because it's set right now for some of the board members, in particular myself. I'm not going to be making motions on items, so I'll be looking for someone else just to make some motion. But eventually, we will also look at what committees you would like to represent or what areas you'd like to focus in on going forward. And then when it comes that point in the meeting, you'd have that opportunity to present whatever motion it is that we're working on for that particular item. So again, as we progress forward, we'll look at the assignments for that and set that up. I'd also like to announce that there was an executive session held on Tuesday, November 25th, 2025, at 6:15 PM to discuss personal matters, personnel matters, not personal.
They were personal.
They were personal. All right. We'll jump down to number six, new business, Treasurers' Report. Ms. Morgan.
I'd like to ask the board to approve the Treasurers' Report as per the attachments. Would you include the following? Number one is the Treasurers' Report for November 2025. Number two is the Board Budget Report for November 2025. Number three is the General Fund Invoices Paycheck number 72194 through 72357 in the amount of $1,301,262.91. Number four is the Electronic Payments in the amount of $6,656,224.17. Number five is the General Fund Invoices Payable Checks number 72358 through 72380 in the amount of $448,327.68. Number six is the Capital Reserve Fund Invoices Paycheck number 1976 in the amount of $5,480.14. And lastly is the series of 2024 Construction Fund Invoices Paycheck number 224 through 234 in the amount of $1,298,618.99.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the roll call as unanimous vote.
Thank you. 6.02, Acceptance of Equipment Donation, Student Services. Ms. Morgan.
I'd like to ask the board to accept the donation of equipment with an approximate value of $7,900, which will support the district's student services department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just for our new board members, any donation of $1,000 or more of money or product needs more.
Thank you, Dr. Bits.
I just want to thank whoever donated. I know they want to be anonymous, but looking at how that will affect our students is really appreciated.
Very good point. Thank you. Mrs. Swire?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as unanimous vote.
Thank you. We will now move on to item 6.03, Endorsement of Transportation Rates for the 2025-2026 Year. Ms. Morgan?
I'd like to ask the board to endorse BNS transportation rates and drivers for 2025 through 2026 as per the attachment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to commend the administration for their work with the bus service provider. I know a lot of districts have had challenges with that, and we seem to have had very good success with that. So thanks.
Excellent point, Dr. Lebo. Thank you. Mrs. Swire?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as unanimous vote.
Thank you. 6.04, Approval of the Fund Balance Commitments, General Funds. Ms. Morgan?
I'd like to ask the board to approve the fund balance commitments for the general fund as presented in the attachment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mrs. Swire?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as unanimous vote.
Thank you. 6.05, Tax Policies Report. Mr. Kikline?
I'd like to ask the board to approve the tax policy report as presented in the attached.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mrs. Swire?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to New Business Curriculum, 7.01, Approval of Curriculum Maps Science. Mrs. Huff?
I'd like to ask the board to approve the science curriculum maps as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Swire?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as unanimous vote.
Thank you. 7.02, New Course Proposal, Introduction to Engineering Design. Mrs. Huff, please.
I'd like to ask the board to approve the new course proposal, Introduction to Engineering Design, as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mrs. Swire?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as unanimous vote.
And 7.03, New Course Proposal, Advanced Portfolio. Mrs. Huff, please?
I'd like to ask the board to approve the new course proposal, Advanced Portfolio, as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I would just want to commend those that are putting these new curriculums together and giving our students the opportunities to advance in engineering.
Mr. Frangell?
I was going to say the exact same thing.
Makes it easy.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Mrs. Swire?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as unanimous vote.
Moving down to nine, New Business Personnel, 9.01, Personnel Report. Would someone?
I'd like to ask the board to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Lebo. Any questions or comments at this point?
I'd like to just thank Keith Shively for his service as principal, as a principal at home, and his service there. He does well. Go back into the classroom.
Any other? Hearing none. Mrs. Swire?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to number 10, New Business Policy, 10.01, Second and Final Reading of Revised Board Policy 210, Use of Medications. Mr. Frangell?
I ask the board to approve the second and final reading of Revised Board Policy 210, Use of Medications as per the attached.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mrs. Swire?
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as unanimous vote.
Thank you. 10.02, Second and Final Reading of Revised Board Policy 222, Tobacco and Vaping Products. Mr. Frangell?
I ask the board to approve the second and final reading of Revised Board Policy 222, Tobacco and Vaping Products as per the attached.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mrs. Swire?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Thank you. 10.03, Second and Final Reading of Revised Board Policy 323, Tobacco and Vaping Products. Mr. Frangell?
I ask the board to approve the second and final reading of Revised Board Policy 323, Tobacco and Vaping Products as per the attached.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to commend those who made these policies for being proactive in the face of a changing industry.
And just for the new board members, over a period of time, we go through and we review a variety of different policies. They can be as a result of changes in legislation, as a result of different ways of looking at things. The tobacco and vaping ones, for example, originally talked about a specific product, Juul, which when vaping was popular when it first came out, that was the product. So it was kind of like everybody talked, you didn't talk about making a copy. You talked about making a Xerox. It's kind of along the same lines that everybody always referred to vaping as Juul. And as the industry changed, we had to expand that to not just include Juul, but to include any products that would follow along. So that's an example of the modifications that we have or changes in circumstances that we have to, whether it's from recommendations from PSBA, recommendations from the state or federal government that we have to make modifications to. So you'll see those quite often, a variety of different, them over a period of time.
And I say that that is the main purpose of us being school board directors, is the fact that we write the policy for the district. So, you know, we kind of own these.
Oh, I forget. Did we vote on that one?
No.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as unanimous vote.
A rookie mistake.
Last one.
Thank you. At this point, we have now reached number 12, Hearing of Visitors. This is an opportunity for public comment. We have reached the second opportunity for public comment. This opportunity is reserved for comments on issues not listed on the agenda and not being voted upon this evening. As a reminder, public comment is limited to residents and taxpayers of the school district. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and requires community members to observe a reasonable decorum. If you would like to address the board, please share your name and the municipality in which you reside. Seeing none. Number 13, Ms. Morgan?
I'd like to ask the board to adjourn.
Let's do a half a second.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.